I'm Paul Cummings and I'm one of the music teachers at Brooks Secondary School. And I'm also the artistic director of the Townsite Jazz Festival here in Powell River. I say proudly about both of those things that I'm involved with. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about what we call the You Are My Sunshine project, a project that we went through in the last year and a half in preparation for the April's Jazz Festival. And there's a short video that we put together that maybe we'll just put on in a moment because it explains the project quite well. Originally, it just started with a conversation with myself and my friend Kusen, Devon PL. And Devon and I have worked on a number of projects over the years. And I'm always just looking for ways to incorporate our First Nations culture with musical things. It's not that easy, but she's a smart lady and has lots of ideas. So we came up with an idea and just sort of ran with it. And it was something that originally was, I wanted to incorporate it into the Jazz Festival. And being at the school district is, in many ways, partners with the Jazz Festival. And we do so many things with our students, I felt like it fit like a glove. So basically, Kusen looked after all the translating of some of the words of You Are My Sunshine into Ia'ju'tum. And I was the guy that put the arrangement together. And I got a sing-along recording and went around to all the schools with Kusen and all that kind of thing. It was a really, really fun project. And we had Tony Papa and his film school document it with the video. So that's kind of how it all started off, so we can watch this. I think it's a seven-minute video. Thanks. No, that's not it.
That's not it.
That's not it.
That's nice.
That's good. I don't know what that is. Seven local choirs.
Hold on, let's go to our West.
Yeah, why up there before?
Yeah, we'll just go to our West.
I'm not digging the competition. So the You Are My Sunshine project is something that I'm very excited about and have been for some months now. As a high school music educator and as a director of the Jazz Festival, I'm always looking for ways to incorporate our beautiful and wonderful First Nations culture into these musical events, but it's not that easy to do. One needs to get creative. And lucky for me, I have a friend in Devon PL, also known as Kusen.
Kusen Athnan, my name is Kusen. And I'm from the Siaman Village in Powell River. I've been part of language for 10 years now, and I've known Paul since I was in high school.
She had translated the words to the song You Are My Sunshine into Ia'ju'tum. I love that song. Everybody knows it. A lot of kids have their parents sing it to them when they were little. And I know you can swing that tune, so it would fit in the Jazz Festival really well.
My language probably has less than 30 fluent speakers left in total between four communities. So opportunities like this are so important.
And Kusen workshops them on not only the language, but all of the culture that comes along with that language.
So my feeling would be Ia'ju'tum and share it between our specific nations. So I mean, we all speak the same language, and our language is different than the speech on people.
There is an opportunity for Kusen and I to go to all of the schools in Powell River and give workshops to students that are interested in learning how to sing the song.
On those sides, your breaths deep, and you shoot the air out the sides. Ka'chlanan.
Ka'chlanan.
Good. This song, Ka'chlanan, is someone who's precious to you. So you are my precious one is what we're singing. Run us up. I think the community will be really inspired by this. We haven't had a problem with this happening before, just accepting the First Nations people that are here. I think it'll just bring everybody together a little bit more. I think it's a great opportunity to learn Ia'ju'tum because that's really important because that's the language from where we are living. And it's going to be a great experience for the kids from K to 12 to come out together and learn together. And I think that's really awesome.
From this project, I'm learning that there's a real thirst for this knowledge. And they're really interested because maybe they've been exposed to some other languages, but not another language that, in a way, belongs to us, it's from kids from here.
You can share these ideas, people learn and grow together. For sure, sharing, we understand their language, we understand how they feel and how we can reconcile and come together as people.
So. Respect. I might hope to treat each other with respect. And I see the kids doing that. Chedched back out, helping one another, old schools coming together. He should then hope always be humble with each other. As we move forward, I have great hopes for these children as adults, as leaders in our community. We always ask the Creator to take care of all of us and things that we do. And I know we also have to read from P'la'ha. And when I say help, I don't just mean P'la'ha people or folk, but the whole.
Great, that was, the performance at the end was condensed for the video. It was more than a minute, a minute and a half long, for all the work that went into it. And I'm glad that it was longer than that. So that video's been circulated. I know it's on the district website and Facebook site. And it's also being distributed throughout the province. The B.C. Choral Federation, for example, and B.C. Music Educators Association have gotten a hold of it. So it'll be interesting to see how widely, you know, how far it spreads around the province or the country or whatnot. So when we were preparing for the You Are My Sunshine project, we, the Townsite Jazz Festival, applied for a grant through an organization called Chorus America. And they are a big deal in the choir world. They're based out of the States and they're sort of, they have members all over the world there. Like I said, a big deal. And we applied and were shortlisted for a grant, but in the 11th hour, we did not, we did not get the grant. And we wouldn't have gotten the grant until after the festival was over. So we started looking to the future and thinking, hey, could there be a phase two? Could we do this again and do it bigger and better than before and include, and include more people? So we put a lot of time into preparing for what we were invited to come back and be interviewed by a panel from Chorus America. And so we basically told them, hey, phase one is done, but we want to continue this on into, into a phase two. So we put a lot of thought into what that could look like and really, really dream about that. So some of the goals for the phase two, if we were ever to find, find the support or the money or get a grant or whatnot, would be to obviously continue the partnership with the Townsite Jazz Festival and the school district and that. We need a new song, that's for sure. I don't think I could rehearse that song for an extra, for another second. And we would, we would reach deeper, I think, across our community to involve more kids. We visited a lot of schools in town, but I think next time around, we'd make sure that we get into places like Assumption and the Christian School and the French School. And we would want to expand the project to all schools that lie within the Ia'ju'tum-speaking nations. So that's a big one. So we're talking about Hamalko, Klahus, Comox, and of course, Klahomen. And so that means getting in boats and water taxis and buses and ferries and that to, to, to offer students and people from those nations an opportunity to participate in something like this, which is extremely thrilling to me. Invite kindergarten to grade 12 students and members of, of all those nations at the end of it. Say we go off and we, we all learn a new song and maybe we take it up to a whole nother experience. We can have, maybe integrate, integrate some of the First Nations culture in with drums and singing and chanting and all that kind of thing. Or maybe it's more than one song and we can encompass a lot of those different ideas. But, so we make our way around that part of the province or the part of the coast and the sail of sea. And then we invite all those kids back to Powell River to do something together and have, like, instead of 300 kids, could be, I don't know. Sky, sky really is the limit with regards to that. And, and also to create another high-quality documentary video, I think is really, really important. And so we do have, we did have a budget in mind when we approached Chorus America. Oh, by the way, that little handout I gave you is just sort of the narrative from, that we sent off to Chorus America. And if, you know, if you're at all interested in knowing more details about our thoughts with regards to the, the goals and the ideas behind this project, it goes into a little bit more depth there. And our budget that we had put together and came out to about $15,000, we felt, in order to pull off a venture like this phase two. And that would include things like, you know, publicity, making sure that proper stipends were, were paid out to, to people that, that are, that are involved, especially, well, not especially, but including our, our people that are helping out and teaching us about the culture and the language and so on and so forth. We've got all sorts, you can imagine, the administration and, and the transportation and accommodation and all those kinds of things that would, that would take. And we just kind of roughly sketched it out, and that was our original request to, to Chorus America. And I can, if, at anyone's request, I can go into more detail about, about that budget. And, but a lot of, when it comes down to budget and money, it just all depends on what kind of response we would get from the other nations and from the school districts and schools that we would, would possibly involve. If it's, obviously, if there's a lot, if everyone says, yes, 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 come over, let's do this, then it's going to cost more money than if one school from Comox says, yeah, can you come over for the afternoon? Right? So, so yeah. And basically, we've got a great team together already. And I would want to augment that team with, with some, you know, definitely some people from, from the school district, like Jessica Johnson and Kristy Payne here would be great. I love working with O'Shea, with Betty Wilson. And she's been my go-to person. I absolutely, absolutely love that, that woman. And we've got some good people on board with the Townsite Jazz, Jazz Festival as well. So with any luck, what would be, what would come up next for us? If we found ourselves in a position where we were able to get finance would be to, obviously, to continue to seek funding and then assemble the team, update a plan for phase two because, you know, things change. And when you get a new team together, there's new fresh ideas. And redefine budgets and schedules and whatnot. And then dive in and start consulting with the Ia'ju'tum-speaking nations that we're surrounded with in this part of the world. And then roll up our sleeves and fly at it. So that concludes my presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a comment, Paul. I was privileged to be a participant in the audience when the presentation happened in '22. And it was absolutely powerful. It was quite an experience to be part of as an audience member and watch everyone at all their ages come together. And so I imagine now, if you expand it in the way that you're talking about, it was already a full room then. What's your plan with that?
I don't, I don't know. We'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess, yeah. Because, yeah, with all those kids, I mean, it was coast to coast up on the stage there. And it's a, it's a pretty big stage, but, but yeah, it'd be nice to, nice to dream. And it's, it's something that could happen again, like it was, the Jazz Festival was able to facilitate that. You know, you can't put on a concert where kids come and sing two songs, for example, right? But to have them part of the Jazz Festival, that all worked out really well. But if in the future, that's, if that's not the right time and place for it, we end up having to, we do something else and that's fine too. So totally open to ideas and, and that.
Do you have a question, right? No, I just, I'm pretty excited, it's lovely.
I think Paul and everybody may not know that Paul also was involved with K'halamiun, created a lot of opportunities for our students and student coordination, music across, across the district and looking at ways to bring people together. And I know normally you're more than willing to talk about it. I thought you were going to throw the Jazz Festival in there, but maybe give a two-minute update on the festival and the opportunities that are there. Because some people may not kind of be aware of the partnership.
Right, so we're coming up on our fifth Townsite Jazz Festival. And the festival is, part of it is a typical professional festival. We hire world-class musicians. They come in and we've got 10 ticketed concerts. And at the same time, at Brooks, we have three senior jazz ensembles, a jazz band, a jazz choir, and a jazz combo. And I invite a jazz band, a jazz combo, and a jazz choir from outside of Powell River to come as well. So we have a group coming from Glen Eagle Secondary School from Coquitlam. And we've got a couple of groups coming from Reynolds Secondary in Victoria. And they come and they perform for each other, they socialize, they get to know each other. And, and then, and they receive workshops. And then during the evening ticketed concerts, they open for the professionals in a professional setting. So our, our high school combo, also known as Kitchen to Kitchen Sink, they're going to be opening for the Walter Mortella Trio at the Shingo Mail at Concert Number One, for example. And if they're lucky, Walter might come over and sit in with them and play. So that, that could happen, that happens at most all of our concerts with the exception of, we've got one late night concert where they really should be in bed by then, so we're not. So that's, that's kind of the student, part of the student component of it. And then, and then also, we have another opportunity for kids from kindergarten to grade 12 to get together and sing and learn a song to back up our star performer. And our star performer's name is Heather Bambrick, we're bringing her in from Newfoundland. She's a fabulous singer. She's one of these multi-talented people that does voice-overs for cartoons. And she's really funny, well, she's from Newfoundland. So she's got that, that Newfie sense of humor. And, and I asked her, I said, how would you feel about having 100 or 200 kids back you up on a song? And she said, yeah, that'd be great, I know just the song, I love that. That's how I started off as a kid, singing in big groups with soloists and that. And so she pitched me the song, Get Happy. Right? And, and so we've got that. And just today, I just finished recording my chamber choir, doing a practice recording, so we can send it off to all the elementary schools, along with the music and the lyrics. They can learn it with their music teachers in their elementary schools. And then we pulled them all together. And they'll, they'll do one other song, but they also have a chance to get, get behind a Juno-nominated jazz singer and, and back her up on, on a tune. So that's, that's a few things that we have going on for students at, at the, at the festival. Probably 50 of my students are just volunteering their time like you would not believe. And it's already begun. Tuesdays at lunch is, is Jazz Festival kids. They all come in and they're already making buttons and banners and getting ready for the festival, so.
Well, thank you for all that you do to provide these opportunities for our students, Paul. I know it's appreciated by more than just the school communities, but the broader community as a whole.
Thank you.
Amen.
Well, it's my pleasure. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thanks for your time and your patience. We're a little late, lucky in the room. Okay, so that moves us to questions period. Do we have any? Other Paul. Okay, all right, to chairperson's remarks then. Every February, people across Canada participate in Black History Month events and festivities that honor the legacy of Black people in Canada and their communities. The 2023 theme for Black History Month is Hours to Tell. This theme represents both an opportunity to engage in open dialogue and a commitment to learning more about the stories Black communities in Canada have to tell about their histories, successes, sacrifices, and triumphs. In honor of Black History Month, school district 47 educators have planned intentional learning opportunities to shine a spotlight on Black Canadian experiences, challenges, and remarkable accomplishments. February is also widely known for sharing expressions of love and kindness. This month, some classrooms included Valentine's Day traditions such as handwritten cards or little treats. But throughout our district, people of all ages demonstrate their big hearts in ways that make a big difference all year long. The Brooks Interact Club recently purchased grocery carts and put them in a handmade cart as a welcome to Powell River gift to the Ukrainian family who's come to live in our community. Interactors also recently presented a check to the local SPCA to purchase much-needed cat and dog food. These students work hard to raise the funds they thoughtfully distribute by volunteering for activities like selling beverages at the Banff Mountain Film Festival. At West Hill Elementary, students and staff are embracing February as kindness month by examining how they can stand up and be advocates for those who may face discrimination. They will have special days of kindness throughout the month with a variety of activities to promote kindness and demonstrate their learning about allyship. As a district, our mission is to prepare students within a safe, inclusive, and dynamic environment to face a changing world as lifelong learners and informed, responsible citizens. We are proud of our students and staff for the work they do every day to demonstrate kindness, an integral element to improving our culture of acceptance, tolerance, mindfulness, and respect. This month, Paint Shirt Day is February 22nd, a day we are all invited to wear pink, raise awareness, and start a conversation to end bullying. I believe each of us has a responsibility to educate those around us to end hate and bullying in all of its forms. As we approach Family Day on February 20th, we collectively celebrate our families, their similarities and their differences, however we define them. We can choose to embrace diversity, kindness, and inclusion every day. Check out our website or follow our social media to learn more about school district 47, as if none of you know that. Okay. Thank you. So with that, then I'll move to the adoption of the agenda. A motion from the floor then, that the regular meeting agenda of February 15th be adopted as circulated. Rob and first time, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Port of closed meetings, pretty straightforward. The board met January 18th, getting camera to discuss items concerning personnel and legal. Oh, sorry, yeah, adoption of the minutes, that the regular meeting minutes of January 18th be adopted as circulated. Kristen, you moving that? And Maureen, second, all in favor? Okay, let's skip over the closed meeting that I already commented on and go right to incoming correspondence. Do we have any comments, questions, concerns around the correspondence pieces? Okay, there being none. Motion that the correspondence listed for item, no, in item 4A and B be received. Rob votes. Kristen, second, all in favor? Okay, outgoing, this is going to be a really quick meeting.
Let's get everything started.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Outgoing correspondence, so 5A, SD 47, to the environmental science students. You'll remember the presentation that was had, and we'll look forward then to.
And I should just speak to that because it came up at our outdoor advisory committee meeting yesterday around the plan that the students have. And Jonathan brought it up, who, if you remember, he's the sponsor, around the, the idea of zero waste and improving recycling. And part of the conversation, you know, we heard their presentation. And part of my response to him is that it should come back to that advisory group if they want to have a plan or discussion. That's why we formed that, that group. Because I think the students came, they had a bit of a plan. If you remember, most of the plan was add more adults to the school. And we know that that's not necessarily the solution of just adding more custodial. So I think what we'll do is have that go back to the committee to kind of formulate a plan of how do they want to, to approach that zero-waste or recycling and try to find some consistency in the schools. But you'll see that coming in your recommendation through the, through the minutes.
Okay, so that came up through?
Because Jonathan's on the committee and so the conversation, and that's why it threw me off a bit was a kind of a bit of, what are you doing, what are we doing about that? And I said, well, the presentation that we heard was more around the students saying how it's going, what's going on, and their idea of, that there needs to be more, more structure or support. But I didn't, didn't hear, like, what we didn't have was, what's the, you know, that we should come up with a plan. But I think it's fine. I think it's just, that's why I was just kind of clarifying, because everyone was there at the meeting, that we didn't see that there was, that we, as a, as a district, was supposed to come up with the plan for Brooks. I thought we were leaving it with them to do that work and come back to us if there's something that they, they needed. But I don't think that was his understanding. So I said, it's fine, we can tackle it at that, at that, at that meeting to see what it is they need to move forward. Because I said, there's huge support here to do that. We just, we, we thought we were reading for them to tell us what they wanted.
And as I recall, they did have a number of. And as I recall, they did have a number of ideas on actions that they could take. Yeah. Okay, so it's just being redirected back to the committee to come up with.
Well, I'll work with Jonathan to see, just to get clarification, are there specific things they were asking of us which we didn't think there, there wasn't necessarily of us? Um, so we'll just work through the plan, and that seems to be the right place, and we can even invite the students to come to have that conversation with that, that group that will make recommendations to the board.
Okay, great, thanks. And that means you're right to Superintendent of Schools' report.
Yeah, which is, is correct, which is just the exclusion, seclusion, um, and suspension report.
Okay, seeing no comments, concerns, or questions, motion that the Superintendent of Schools' report to be received as presented, Rob moves. Jackson, all in favor? Okay. We're not looking to make up time here.
Okay. Good point of clarification. How do you know? You might need to bring another two hours. I said, said previously the other day, it's like, I don't know, I gauge the clock and the audience, and the budget presentation always gets longer or shorter based, based on what's, what's an acceptable amount of time for a meeting. Uh, so yeah, the, the package you have in front of you are the, the provincial documents that everyone submits, so building on the conversation at the committee of the whole, uh, much of my presentation there was just using internal documents to kind of lay out our, our spending plan. This is if you were to compare our spending, uh, across the province to other districts, this is the, the format that you'd see it in. I'll skip, um, through the statements, and then I'll just draw attention to, to some of the schedules, which I think is more meaningful, um, to your work. Two A would be the first one, and I'm just, I'm just drawing attention, this, this is the one I, I reviewed a committee at the hall and, and had supplemental information that spoke to reconciling the numbers between the amended budget and, and the budget passed in the spring, it's predominantly the, the enrollment factor with the, uh, additional students in the system, including DL. Two B lays out the, the spending, um, again on the, on the left, um, by employee groups and then service and supply. Schedule two C is presenting the same spending, um, through those groups, but also by, by the various functions, uh, operations, transportation, administration, et cetera, and then the programs within, so, um, you can see the reportable programs within instruction that include career, library, counseling. Then you get up to schedule three, and, and three A specifically, there's, there's two pages, and this lists the, the number of special purpose funds. Um, I reviewed these, these in the past, I will draw attention to the, the last few on the second page, as they were in the budget that was adopted in the, in the spring, as, as the, um, number of early learning, uh, programs we, we have now, and, and part of that was, they weren't confirmed at the time, it was late, late June after the, the meeting and into the summer, and in one case it was kind of a mark of information, but these include the Seamless Day, the Just Before, Early Years Kindergarten, and then the three year commitment, uh, ECL, early care and learning. Uh, and then the one other piece that we've spent quite a bit of time talking, that, that wasn't here before on, is, is that Student Recovery Fund. At any point if there's questions, I'll, I'll pause, but, so that's the sum total of that special purpose fund, um, and then the, the last page is, is capital, and for the purpose of this exercise, I don't usually draw much attention to it at year end when you're adopting the financial statements, the capital schedules are more relevant, it shows what we spent in buildings, or computers, this is really so amortization. So unless there's any questions.
I had one, Steve. Sorry. Um, under the Just Before.
Yeah.
That restricted grant, do you know if there's a timeline when we stop receiving that grant, where we have to assume the costs for Just Before?
Uh, I believe there's a three-year commitment.
Three, oh, yeah. And Kristen, I'm correct?
Yeah, I think it's two years.
I think when we applied for the pilot, so we caught it for the, the three years, and then some of these, um, filed only to our own local commitment to before and after.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no questions, I'll go back to the first page for the number. It's, yeah, so you're, you're, you're adopting the three readings of the amended budget bylaw. Now, in three minutes, that's forty-seven and a half million dollars. Everyone's good with that? That is the, that's the, that is the amended budget bylaw, it's, um, typically on the amended budget, you're doing, uh, all three readings at the same time unanimously, whereas when we do the, the budget for the following year, it's often split between tabling, tabling the draft, getting more consultation, and then, then doing the second, third of the, in June. Did you have another question there, Rob?
I don't know if you're on the one then yet.
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
I might have you wrong. Okay. Um, yeah, I think in the, the draft, there was a, a motion on the, the cover, um, that the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three amended budget be adopted as presented.
Rob and Jackson, all in favor?
Okay, so then the, the last piece, this is the, the report you see each month around actual spending, uh, as compared to budget, and this will be the, the last month that's showing the budget that was adopted in the spring, so if the, the budget you just adopted in February, by the time you meet again in, in March, I'll, um, update the numbers in the system. So if your question was gonna be both a negative.
Yeah, I was wondering about, where does it pull from? Do we just allocate money from somewhere else, or?
Uh, no, it's just, I mean, if, if you didn't adjust for, it's just gonna keep, uh, a bigger, a bigger negative number, but, um, yeah, that'll be addressed with amendments.
Great.
Okay, thanks, Steve. A motion then that the Secretary of Treasuries report be received as presented. Jackson and Kristen, all in favor? Okay, so that moves us to the committee report, so we just have eight A, the committee of the whole report for February eighth.
And there was no, um, recommendations for motions coming up, but they're excellent. For information summarizes the meeting, but nothing, uh, direct came up.
Okay. So that will move us to other information, nine A, Transit for Teens, go ahead.
All right, so I'm sitting here trying to remember the, the other name for the campaign that the dis, the board before I was here wasn't supporting, do you remember what it was called?
On Board?
On Board, something like that.
Yeah. So, so you know about that? Um, so basically, the Single Mothers Alliance is just seeking support for a new campaign to extend the age of free ridership, um, because the previous campaign was zero to twelve, and this would extend it from thirteen to eighteen as well. Um, you know, and, uh, yeah, the link between poverty reduction, access to school, or outs, out of school supports, um, I mean, there's a lot, I sent you guys quite a bit of, a lot of the good reasons to do it, um, and basically, they're at this stage just seeking, um, a motion that basically says we, as this board, support this and, and write this letter to, the sample letter that's in the agenda, something similar. Um, and, you know, it's, it's maybe not as pressing of an issue somewhere smaller like here, with a, not the most, um, rapid transit system, I guess I'll say, but, uh, really, if it helps even one family, it, uh, be relieved of a bit of that burden, whether it's financially or just, I need to leave work to, to get my kid here, you know, um, all those kinds of issues that come up, then I think it's worth doing, and then, uh, you know, a byproduct of that is that we're also supporting other communities that do have that more pressing need for this, so.
Are they looking for a letter of support?
So, oh, uh, so Vancouver School Board and New West School Board, and I think there's been a few others now, since I last spoke with Vivica, but they've all passed, uh, a motion of, of stating their support, their position of support, and then, uh, the intent, I think, I mean, there's a sample motion I have here, and it's basically, uh, an endorsement for the campaign and, and, and that, and the intent to write this letter in support to, to the stated places.
Okay, Kristen, do you want to go ahead and read the motion? We can move up the table.
Okay, so this is a sample motion, it's, whereas every teenager aged thirteen, or resolution, um, age thirteen to eighteen should have the right to access school and their communities, therefore be resolved that the school for District Forty Seven, just as government body in the sample, um, endorse the Single Mothers Alliance Transit for Teens campaign, and in doing so, write a letter to the Mayor's Council on Regional Transportation, the Board of Directors of BC Transit, the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change Strategy, the Office of the Premier, the Ministry of Social Development and Poverty Reduction, the Ministry of Education and Childcare, the Minister of State for Infrastructure and Transit, the Ministry of Children and Family Development, and the Select Standing Committee on Children and Youth to work with the provincial government to finalize and secure funding and develop a plan that will provide free public transit for teens age thirteen to eighteen in BC.
Okay, wow, that's a really wordy motion.
It's a wordy one, isn't it?
I can't type that.
Yeah, I can get rid of this, yeah.
One more time.
Yeah, no, that's a, my, my mouth was going dry, everything, yeah.
Okay, so, most, um, we've got a motion on the table, Kristen's already spoken to the motion, do we have a secondary for that motion? Jackson, or Rob, all in favor?
Okay, because I wonder if it's advisable to, to reach out to the local MLA to ask for an update on what government's doing as well, like, I, I totally, except for reading the letters, but I also just think that making that connection, like, I know I work for Nick, but just to have that connection to be like, hey, you're our advocate to the provincial government, tell us what their, if government plans to fund less passes for thirteen to eighteen-year-olds, and then also get that, so I support the motion a hundred percent.
Yeah, do we add that to the motion? The letter also goes?
Well, I mean, we can capture that, the letter.
Yeah. Okay.
Good point, Rob, thanks. Yeah, okay, so all in favor? Okay, we'll write that letter to all of those people.
Congratulations on your first motion.
Yeah, making sure we make reference to, yeah, get a little closer involved, because it's gonna make a difference, right? That's what we want, not a candidate, right? Depends how good this assistant is.
Okay, so next up, we have, um, the twenty-three to twenty-eight Combinational Comprehensive Nation Plan.
And I just included that for your information, I think it's an incredible amount of work they've done, and hopefully the Blue Informer Strategic Plan will be, or, was this?
In-house, or did they hire strategic?
I, I'm not sure, I know they had a whole number of people in-house, and they have, um, a couple of consultants that are, but they have a regular consulting contract with the nation around policy and governance.
What a beautiful department.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, there is definitely a lot of information in there, and I'm excited about what it could look like, you helped celebrate the successes on the educational pieces that they've noted in the plan, and look forward to next steps, so thanks. Um, okay, so that just leaves partner liaison meeting, so right after our last meeting, we went away for board chairs and, um, the professional associations for Super and for Secretary Treasurer and partner liaison meetings, um, which was, I mean, it's always a lot of information. Uh, but just to give a, a bit of an overview, Assistant Deputy Minister Chloe Nichols provided an overview of the work being undertaken in partnership with the VCS TA, I'll provide this for you, Anna.
Okay.
Um, to develop six modules, six modules focused on student growth, achievement, and equity and outcomes, they are governance, legislation, roles, and responsibilities. Part one recently, uh, hosted virtually for all trustees, part two coming up on the twenty-third. Number two, relations with First Nations, three, working with people, four, values-based, evidence-informed decision-making, five, planning for student success, and six, financial and resource management. Uh, VCS TA President Carolyn Brody presented an introduction to a new collaborative provincial project on school trustee codes of conduct. Uh, the project is developing a proactive approach to support trustees and their educational communities through develop, development of, uh, province-wide criteria, practical guidance on common issues and training, including emphasis on student achievement, equity, and wellbeing, alignment with existing provincial and federal regu, regulation, alignment with VCS TA's core values, which are confidentiality, conflict of interest, integrity, relationships, respect, and responsibility, that have provisions on respectful workplaces and relationships with others, anti-racism, reconciliation, and relations with local First Nations, and acceptable use of social media. Uh, also to include policies and procedures for breaches and sanctions, public accountability, uh, mechanism to regularly review and affirm the code, be in plain language, and provide board training, including, uh, with trustee onboarding. Uh, the next steps, and there was quite a range in the room, some trustees speaking to, uh, you know, they're being, not revisiting their code of conduct for thirty years and it being entirely outdated, and then districts like ours where it's relatively new policy, but certainly many of these items weren't considered when we were doing that work, so we may, um, also address that policy moving forward, certainly they're gonna put in all the work and provide the framework for that. Uh, the next steps for boards are to review their, our code of conduct policy, and the VCS TA will finalize their criteria and approach in the spring, and roll out the project for implementation in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. A lot of emphasis on the fact that collaboration between boards and senior staff will be crucial to do this work in a meaningful way. And we had, uh, Minister of Education and Childcare Rajan Singh and Deputy, Assistant Deputy Minister Jennifer, Jennifer McCray presented on the recently launched K to Twelve Anti-Racism Action Plan and the work being done to help schools better understand their roles and provide training opportunities and tools to help with, address racism in our classroom, classrooms. Uh, some details were shared on the collection of information in the youth dialogue series for students in grades seven to twelve. The stories and ideas shared by the students were key in informing how the ministry and school leaders can create anti-racist, equitable, and safe learning environments for all. What was heard was that students don't feel safe and that teachers and adults don't know how to respond. It was noted that although students' individual experiences of racism vary, racism holds all students back from truly thriving. The K to Twelve Anti-Racism Action Plan includes six priority areas of action, community voice, removing barriers, raising awareness, collaborative change, capacity building, and school support. It was shared that an anti-racism teaching guide and inclusion calendar resource guide are some of the tools and strategies identified within the plan, and those would be coming soon. Um, if you had a chance to read the plan, you would have seen it, I think, in the weekly, um, but there's a number of deliverables under each of those six headings, and those were two of the ones mentioned there. Uh, we had an informative and engaging presentation titled Young People as Allies in Educational Transformation. Assistant Deputy Minister Melanie Stewart introduced Dr. Vicki Phillips from the NCEE, which is the National Center on Education and the Economy. Dr. Phillips presented, uh, presentation made a few points clear, including that student perceptions are a reliable and valid predictor of effective teaching, that the voice of students is often unheard, and that we know the difference that teachers make in outcomes for students. Dr. Phillips provided an overview of the International Youth Survey from thirteen countries describing common youth concerns and values and the desire for youth engagement. Uh, the presentation slides aren't available, but they should be made available on the hub for anyone to see, uh, moving forward. Uh, the primary takeaways, uh, number one, the powerhouse combination of high-demand academic press and the, and intentional support culture. Number two, the primacy of the student-teacher relationships, how students feel about school and act on those feelings is largely predetermined by their relationship with teachers, and it's not about being liked. And number three, the missed possibilities when leaders fail to consider school from the perspective of students, which is really timely for our conversation around strategic planning. Uh, then we had a, a panel, Vicki Phillips, the CEO of the NCEE, Heather Greve, the board chair of Kamloops Thompson, Chris Kennedy, the superintendent of West Vancouver, and Flavia, is that Coughlin?
Yeah.
Coughlin, Secretary Treasurer for Maple Ridge Pit Meadows. They provided a panel discussion on the topic of young people as allies in educational transformation and deep. in educational transformation, and detailed how students are being engaged on specific initiatives in their districts. Board Chair Heather Greve talked about the power of utilizing students to engage other students, especially those who are generally silent, provided the most robust feedback for leaders to consider in School District seventy-three, echoing the sentiments provided in the earlier presentation on the desire for youth to be engaged. I happened to be sitting at the table with SD seventy-three Superintendent Rhonda Nixon, and she explained how they gathered students from forty-eight schools utilizing the student council via Zoom and asking students to bring three different students to a Zoom session, also providing authentic leadership to that student in their breakout Zoom room. And students were asked to complete the following sentences. "I know that I've been successful as a student when blank," "and to be successful, I need blank," from School District seventy-three. And so that was just a really powerful kind of presentation from that district and conversations that were had around that. Was there anything that you guys wanted to add to?
I don't know, it was pretty extensive. We were listening.
Sometimes.
No, I think for me, it was the, talking about, you know, student perceptions and research across the world, which just verifies, which you know, which is teacher efficacy. Like, it's so much based on the teachers and the teacher's skills and the teacher's relationship with students. And so we kind of, I think, as we move through strategic planning is keeping that in mind of how we can use those that and continue to build capacity.
Thanks, Jay. Okay. So that moves us on to question period. How about now?
Just one.
Sure.
Has the district, the board selected a consultant to assist with strategic planning?
We have not, but that conversation will be to follow this open meeting.
Okay, okay. Because the reason I'm asking is, as soon as we have, it would be helpful to have contact with that person. We have a proteo training at the end of April that's going to focus on goal setting. So that might tie in quite nicely.
Great, thanks for that, Nisi. Okay. I would ask Paul, but there's clearly no Paul. So a motion to your chair?